This conference will now be recorded.
Pardon me for a moment. We'll call this April 18th meeting to order. Chaplain Byron Matson.
Would you stand as able and join me as we pray our invocation this evening? Dear Lord and Father of us all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the Sedalia City Council, Mayor, Administrator, members and their staffs meet to discuss and make decisions that affect this community and its citizens. We are thankful for their dedication to serve for the good of our city. We ask your protection for all of our first responders, police, fire, sheriff, hospital staffs, ENTs, ambulance, and all who often risk their own lives to serve us. Tonight, we offer a special thank you to our outgoing Mayor John Katie for a great term of office with so much being accomplished in these short four years. His service to our city has been such an asset and will be long remembered. And we will welcome tonight a new mayor, Andrew Dawson, who will lead this city of Sedalia through the next four years. We pray for his good health, his success as he assumes the many duties that are required of him for our city. God bless the United States of America, our beloved constitutional republic, of which so many have fought and died to create and preserve for over 240 years. Bless and protect all who are still serving today, military and civilians in this country and throughout the world. A special prayer too for Ukraine and what they're going through, and please bless those people. Now, as we leave this evening, please protect us and our loved ones, keep us from harm until we meet again. All this we pray in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
My religion is to defy the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under thy eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Marlene Rocco, please. Lehman?
Here.
Oldham?
Here.
Dawson?
Here.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
I show him online, but I don't see his picture. And you're muted, Mr. Richardson.
Yeah, he just messaged me that he's trying to get on the meeting.
Okay. I can see him, but we'll come back to him when he gets off.
Okay. Cross?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
And Bliss?
Here.
So, we're gonna open this, tonight's meeting with a public hearing on an annexation proposal for South New York property, Michael, Michelle, and Katie Fisher, 2845 South New York. Anybody, citizenry, like, come forward and make any comments in regard to that? We'll continue on then, thank you. So, Bob Heller, would you please come forward?
I'm walking this year.
Yeah. So, Bob, get up there next to that microphone and pick it up. Bob, Bob has, has never been short of words.
(laughing).
We'll give you 30 minutes or so, whatever you want.
No, I'll, I'll try to keep it brief, but that's gonna be hard for me, 'cause I'm pretty proud of what we do. Um, I said a couple of years ago when I got up here that, you know, I was shooting for 31, because that was the number I raced under. Well, now that 31 got here this year, I've kinda decided to up that a little bit. Uh, so, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna shoot for 40. That way, then maybe I'll live a little longer. But, we had a good show, uh, we had a meeting with some of the city, city people, a couple of days before the show, and I kinda, I kinda took that they were wondering what, if this show was really benefiting Sedalia. And I kinda get that, you know, 'cause we are using the parking lot and down here and everything. Well, so, after the show and a day's rest, I, I got all the entry deals. Forty-two percent of the cars that were here out of 135 entries was actually from out of town, Kansas City, Columbia, Jeff City, uh, Warrensburg. So, we are bringing the out-of-town people, and, and then those people, the same day with the sidewalk deal, uh, we've even gone to a restaurant after the show a few times, and your restaurant was packed with a bunch of those people that were there eating. So, I know it does bring some funding to, to Sedalia. But the biggest funding it does is it brings money for our Sedalia Dare program. Uh, this is an all-year event for Maybel and I, we work on it all year long, gathering stuff and making sure that we have plenty of auction items to put in the auction. Uh, I, I've gotta break down on all, what everything brings, the voting of the cars is penny a vote, and there was 3,000, over $3,000 just in penny a vote. So, you know, when you break it all down, it's, it's kinda the, it's kinda the cool deal. Um, I took all the cash down and had the cash put in, into a cashier's check, and I had this made out to the Sedalia Dare program in honor of one of my good racing buddies, Shorty Akers. Shorty and I raced together a lot of years, he's a mainstay, was a mainstay at the State Fair Speedway, raced the Y8. So, I, I did this show this year in his memory. He passed away, um, he was actually older than me, so, anyway, I have in my hand that I wanna present to the Sedalia Police Department for the Sedalia Dare program to use it to educate our kids in the, in, to make the right choice. And in my hands are checks for $19,907.24. Now, I wanna say, I do wanna say that the Hayden family has made the Dare Car Show part of their Hayden, Hayden Family Freedom Foundation trust. As long as Maybel and I are doing the car show, they have agreed to give us money every year, and this year, they gave us $10,000. That's in that, so. You, you know, it just, the community is behind this, that's what my goal was. Uh, when I started this 31 years ago was to make the community aware this program was being taught by our police department in the schools of Sedalia to support it, and I, I believe we've, we've achieved that. Thank you.
So, Bob, today, you, you mentioned to me there was a car that came from a great distance?
Yeah, there, there was a guy, I have my own page, I guess, or group on Facebook, it's, uh, the Dare Car Show group, and this guy friended me, he, he was asking me questions about me, and he asked if he could be a member of the group, and I said absolutely. And he said, well, I'm gonna bring two beautiful cars, and he did bring two beautiful cars. One was a '46 Ford, uh, teal-green, beautiful car, and the other one was a '49 Mercury. Bob, you might have remembered this one, down there on, it was down there on Second, uh, on Osage, almost on the main. It was red, it was a '49 Ford, but it had a '46 Ford front end on it. Talk about custom, I mean, this thing was beautiful car, had chopped top, 09 yards. Anyway, this guy came from Paducah, Kentucky, and he said he'd be back, so.
Okay. I'll thank you, sir.
And I just wanna add, I always, I got, always give this little gig, okay? You, the city council, have never had to appropriate $1 to this program because of that car show. And we are the richest program in, and, and rich is not the right word, but that's the only thing with my education I can come up with, okay? We are the, the best endowed program in the state of Missouri, and we're in the top six in the nation.
Thank you, Bob. Maybel, is Maybel here?
Yes.
Wave your hand, stand up. There we are, there it is.
One thing you forgot to mention, this money will go towards two scholarships for high school graduates, one is secondary arts and one is, uh, health conference. And it's $500 a year, and we were gonna try to get this done, that's the balance.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Don't forget, we, in public session, I think Mitchell's may be here, and they wanted to say something before we get away from public.
We had a public session where, I could go back and say it if you'd like.
Yeah, I know they, we're gonna make them. Is Ms. Mitchell here? She was gonna make an effort to get down here, so, can we do that? I, I was- It was a public hearing on the annexation? Uh-huh. On the annexation?
No, not on the annexations.
Oh, okay, you're talking about good and welfare?
Yeah.
At the end?
Okay, yeah, we could-
Do it at the end?
Yeah. Okay. Okay, we need approval of the session, uh-
Much to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And like so with the planning something?
Much to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Finance Administration Chairman Steve Bliss.
All right, easy, first one, Don Jennings is giving her monthly presentation about, uh, our income, revenue.
Well, this month, we're actually gonna start with March and the year-end totals. Um, for the month of March, we actually went over these last month, but, uh, two-
Is that on?
Yes.
I don't think the microphone maybe turned on.
She's on the spot.
Huh.
Tap on the end of it, see.
(laughing). Okay. It looks like problem.
It, it is under control.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, for the month of March, we actually went over the majority of this last year, but we're gonna talk where we ended up year-to-date. So, sales tax was down for the month of March, 2%. Use tax was up 16.4%. Franchise and cigarette tax were, was up 23%. Property tax collections were, oh, transportation taxes were up 0.8%, and property tax collections were actually up 128.3%. So, for the month of March, we ended up 4.4% higher than the previous March. Um, fiscal year-to-date, where we ended fiscal year '22 was 13.4% up in sales tax, 15.5% up in use tax, down 1.8% in franchise and cigarette tax, up 10.8% in transportation tax, and up 6.8% in property tax, for a total of 10.4% up in taxes from the prior year. And you'll recall that we budgeted for a 2% increase, so we came in well above. For the month of April, our sales tax revenue was actually up 14.4% from this time in the prior year, and use tax was actually up 48.4%, causing us to be up 17.5% up this year just for the month of April from the prior year, so, looking good again.
Any questions, counsel?
Wait a second. Go through that?
I, I just did.
Oh, I, I'm sorry.
(laughing).
Tried to do some military.
Steve Bliss?
Second item, uh, November 2018, council adopted-
Thanks, Don.
Thanks, Don. We'll get her out of there. She, she sprinted out of there, didn't she? Out of the gate. Uh, November 2018, council adopted an ordinance to add the mayor and city administrator to the hospital board of trustees. The ordinance contained a sunset clause aimed at having council review these provisions in 2020 to make, uh, the conscious decision as if they should continue in 2020 and again in 2021. Council adopted ordinances to extend the sunset another year. If council takes no action, the changes to the board of trustees of adding the mayor and city administrator will expire. Staff recommends this collaboration has strengthened the relationship between the hospital and the general city governance. This has also brought more attention to the immensely, immensely important issues of community health, which is a cornerstone to the quality of life of the citizens and thereby the mission of the city. Staff recommends extending the provisions to continue the practice of having the mayor and city administrator serve on the Bothwell Hospital Board of Trustees.
Counsel, any questions? Marlene, read your orders, please.
Bill number 2022-55, an ordinance extending the sunset provision for section 2-434B relating to the city hospital board of trustees.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bill number 2022-55, an ordinance extending the sunset provision for section 2-434B relating to the city hospital board of trustees.
Final passage. Second.
More call, please. Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
I can see he's on, he, he's having troubles getting his, uh, audio to work or his video, so I guess we're gonna have to count him absent.
Okay.
Yeah, he's saying his, uh, mobile connection isn't very good, so, let's get the deal.
Okay, so, we'll mark him absent. Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
And Bliss?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent. Third item.
A five-year capital improvement plan is an important piece of the strategic planning and budgeting process. This planning tool provides a look over the next five years of what capital improvements are feasibly attainable, along with managing the related debt structure of the city. Although it's a five-year plan, it is looked at and updated each year in accordance with priorities set during your strategic planning, our strategic planning session. Kelvin has a presentation, uh, concerning this, and staff recommends adopting, uh, the updated plan, but let's go through the plan.
Great. And, uh, please don't hesitate, I can go through this in as much detail or as much, uh, as much overview, I had planned to, to just kinda give you an overview. What this really represents is, is somewhat of the culmination of all of your strategic planning and, um, uh, and scoring that you do during the strategic planning, and then the current year budget. And what I do is, is I lay out, uh, five years across the top here, and start with what you adopted in your current budget, and then after, uh, I've laid all of those in that you adopted in your current budget, I go back to the scoring sheets that you did that prioritized each of those major projects that we're looking for in the, in the capital improvements plan, and, uh, and laid those out, uh, in accordance to that priority to when I felt like we could feasibly get that into the budget. Um, so, again, going down through there, you know, if any of those that you wanna talk about or move around, I'd be certainly happy to, to discuss, but as I said, they're, they're kinda laid in there in, in accordance with the order that you all prioritized them. Going through the second sheet there, um, uh, and then, uh, going all the way down through there, and then, uh, in summary, I do a summary at the bottom of it to see where the revenues could potentially come from, and then, um, making sure that across the, the bottom here that we can feasibly do that if, if we get there. As, as Counsel Man Bliss mentioned though, and, and as I mentioned in the admin memo, we will look at this every year, so this certainly isn't set in stone, um, but as we go through and prioritize with the next council strategic planning meeting, uh, we will update those and, and see where we need to adjust or move things up or down in the priority level. But, uh, one of the important things there is the, uh, the less government debt, and so we do a, uh, certainly related debt schedule to look at, you know, one of the ways to fund some of these project, is, projects is to do debt, but we've gotta look at pay off the debt that we've looked at before, that we've already incurred, before we look at incurring more tax, more debt and/or, uh, more projects. So, I take that out of the available funding and then look at the, uh, total funding. So, in regards to the debt, um, we look at the debt in two different buckets. First of all, the enterprise funds, like the water in the sewer and sanitation, and then also then the government debt, uh, which primarily is in the capital improvements plan, uh, our capital improvements fund. The, uh, going down the enterprise funds, what we try to do, or what we look at to make sure that we're not getting too heavy in debt, or making sure that we're haven't, generating enough revenue to, to pay that debt back, we look at what we call a debt service coverage ratio, and anytime that is below 1, you're not able to meet your debt service, or you're not able to make your debt payments when they're on time. So, what we've said in our debt management policies, our financial management policies that you all review and adopt every year, uh, part of that policy is, is we set a target of 1.35, so 135% of our debt service, or we make sure that there's 135% of revenue available for the debt service after we pay the operating cost. Um, the, uh, we, again, try to keep that at 135, and, uh, what you'll see there that I've circled there on the screen on the case of, uh, water pollution control, and again, we'll have a, um, uh, work session scheduled for next Monday, the 25th, to talk more about the master plan, but I've laid in there based off of what I know is coming in the master plan, and what we've talked about in the budgeting and, uh, and, uh, strategic planning, is that in FY '25, fiscal year 2025, I've put in $40 million worth of debt to, uh, that we know we're gonna need to replace the, uh, the North Wastewater Treatment Plant. Now, we know it's gonna cost more than that, uh, Brenda has been, uh, looking for grant funds, and we're hopeful that maybe we can get maybe 20 million in grant funds and then $40 million worth of debt and, uh, and get that done. So, you can see a pretty substantial increase in the debt service coverage in fiscal year 2025. Now, what I opted to, uh, to offset that is, is that I, uh, looked at increasing rates slower rather than increasing the rates, what it would take to make that to a 135 debt service. So, I, I believe it is much better and easier for the community to, uh, to swallow if you, um, uh, increase those more gradual as opposed to all at once. That will get us under our target debt service ratio, but it will still be, uh, in the range to where we can comfortably make our debt service, uh, payments. So, any questions, comments, concerns? I mean, and again, this is just what I've laid out as far as a plan going forward. We will obviously bring all of that back to you to make those decisions as we go, but this is just trying to lay out and take a harder look going forward. Do you have a, okay. Um, the other thing of note there, going down through the water fund is in good shape as far as that. Sanitation, as far as that coverage ratio is in good shape, however, the, that's really because sanitation has very little debt. We know that we're still struggling to, uh, to keep up in that fund, and then, uh, most certainly to do the capital replacements when they happen, so, we may have to look again at debt, uh, there and, uh, going forward, so. The, uh, government debt, uh, we look at three ratios to see if we're in good shape or we're in comfortable where, where we're at with the, uh, amount of government debt. We don't wanna get too far ahead of ourselves. And so, the first thing we look at is, is debt, uh, debt over revenues, and, uh, we want our debt to be less than 120% of our total revenues, and again, that's in the policies that you all adopt for debt management. And, uh, and we're in good shape there, we, um, we have, um, we are well under that. And then debt service over expenditures, each year, we want the debt service to be less than 8% of our total expenditures, and again, we're doing very well in that area. We are, um, we are blessed that we, uh, don't have a lot of debt that we're, uh, that we're carrying. And, uh, but then on the debt amortization over the next 10 years, and it, and we tried to set that target to where 65% of our debt, total debt, will be paid off in the next 10 years. We made the conscious decision, um, a, uh, two years ago when we financed the Hickory Community Center, that we knew that we were doing, taking on a, relative to our total debt, quite a bit of debt, um, that, uh, will be paid out for over 25 years. So, for the short term, we're gonna, we're gonna be under that, or, or over that, yeah, under, I'm sorry, under that 65% for, oh, amortized over the next 10 years, but then that will recover by FY '30, so. Be happy again to entertain any questions, any comments, any concerns anybody might have.
Counsel? Marlene, we'll read your orders, please.
Bill number 2022-56, an ordinance adopting a five-year capital improvement plan.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bill number 2022-56, an ordinance adopting a five-year capital improvement plan.
Final passage.
More call, please. Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson, still absent. Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
That's seven yes and one absent. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, John.
Teen advice, public safety.
We have two items tonight on public safety. The first one will be a presentation about the, excuse me, firefighter's retirement fund.
If you remember, uh, starting back in July, we had a, we made a presentation to council about our concerns over the sustainability of the current firefighter's pension, uh, fund, and, uh, this is a, the graph that we presented at that point in time, and as you can see, the, uh, contribution amount is going up rather steeply, uh, to where we're at about $460,000 per year now in, uh, contributions to that plan. And then, uh, even though we keep increasing the contributions at, at a higher rate than wages are going up, the unfund- are going up, the unfunded liabilities instead of going down continue to increase. And to where the unfunded liabilities are now at over four and a half million dollars of our unfunded liabilities, which means our liabilities are four and a half million dollars worth more than our current assets. So we then looked at by comparison, the loggers fund that we do for the, the rest of the city. And you can see there, the trend line for the contributions is going up, but at a much, much shallower or much lower curve line, which is to be expected because wages are going up, you know? So if you express them as a percent of wages, they are relatively stable as a percent of wages, so they're going up at about the same rate as wages are going up. Conversely, the, the unfunded liability is dropping pretty dramatically. So we are paying off the previous promises and although it's a much bigger fund, we are at about $1.3 million unfunded liability at this point in time. So, you know, looking at those two graphs side by side, you can see the loggers is, is going in the right direction and the firefighter's pension is going in the wrong direction and going pretty steeply in the wrong direction. So the reason, again, we looked at this is the reasons for that, and this shows essentially the reason. Loggers is, has about eight billion with a B assets that they are able to invest. And so we get to, we get to benefit of that power in the investment world. They can do investments that we can't do. They have full-time professional managers that are picking those investments and, and watching them day in, day out, where we're firefighters and city administrators and finance directors and all of that, that we have other things that we're, that are taking our time away and we're not able to manage those. But the trend lines are about the same. The, the loggers trend is a little bit going up, a little bit higher than the, are, are dropping not as fast as the, the trend line for the firefighter's pension. But the gap between the two is a little over 3%. So year in, year out, on average over this time period, the loggers earn 3% more than the firefighter's pension, which is about half again as much as what the firefighter's pension has, has earned. So that is the reason why they're going in the, in opposite direction. And as long as that continues, essentially what that means is that if you give the same benefit, we're going to have to put 3% more every year into the plan than we would otherwise in loggers. So spending more to get less. So council at that time directed us to move forward to explore the options of moving, moving all firefighters into loggers and, and what that would mean. We, this is kind of in order here, the timeline here of the events since then. And we reached an agreement with the union to, outside of the collective bargaining process, to meet with each employee. I did a calculation or a projection for each employee. We met with each employee in, in December and showed them where the effects that it would have on them individually. And generally, those meetings were positive, but there were some questions that we needed to follow up on. We then also happened since then, the strategic planning, and that was scored as overwhelmingly your highest priority for the general fund to move forward with the, the funding that unfunded liability and, and moving it over to loggers, stopping the bleeding, so to speak. We also then worked with loggers and legal. I'm sorry. We then worked with loggers and legal on the logistics and also we appropriated $250,000 in the budget. Since then, since you've adopted the budget, there was a couple of things in the budget that really affected this and each individual employee differently. But the biggest of which is, is you gave a 5.7% of COLA. So that had a huge impact on these calculations. As well as April 1, there was another 3% escalation in the firefighter's base. So with those, those effects, I went through and I recalculated each employee again. And now in summary, there are six employees that are what I would call underwater. They would receive less benefit if they retired under the plan to do the, freeze the current plan and, and go to loggers than they would if we just kept the current plan in place with a assumption of a 2% escalator in the base and they retired exactly at 55. All of them, if they waited until 58, the, the one that's in the worst shape, if they waited until they were 58, they would, they would be better off under the loggers. And also, all six of them, even though they're underwater right at 55, loggers routinely has given COLAs or cost of living adjustments after retirement that the current plan does not do. And they all quickly make up the difference. And so I went through and I added up the, you know, each year for each of those six employees, the ones that were negative and the total negatives are $25,446. So what I recommend is, is that we take, is, we take that $25,000 and each individual share of that $25,000 and we bonus that out to them currently. And I started out looking at it as though we could put it in their 457. However, there's only three of those six that are currently in the 457 or the deferred compensation arrangement. So we could do it either way. We could, we could give them the option, they could put it in their 457, save it for their retirement, which is what it's intended to do, is make up that, make up for that gap, or they could take the cash and go. Recommended also that they, that we allow in-service payments after 55 from the legacy plan to emulate the drop program. The current plan has that deferred retirement option or whatever, where when they turn 55, they can say, okay, I will retire within five years, but for purposes of the retirement, I'm going to retire today and continue to work. That retirement plan, our retirement payment goes into a separate account for them. And then when they do actually retire, then they get that as a lump sum distribution. And there's a couple of different options as to how they can take that lump sum. With us going to loggers, loggers will no, will not, will not administer the legacy plan for us if we ever wanted to, as long as there are people in the drop program. So what I recommend is, is that we stop the drop program as we freeze it, but in, in order to keep those employees to, to have that option to them or effectively have that option, we would allow in-service retirement or retirement payments from the legacy plan. So when they reach 55, they could start drawing under their legacy plan, the old pension plan, whatever it's frozen at, at that point in time, they can start drawing that even though they have, they are still working for us. So they can, can collect their, their full-time wages as well as their retirement. Now, what I would recommend to them is, is to put the majority of that into the 457, but they can take it and have a higher standard of living or they can put it into a 457. If they put it into the 457 or the deferred comp arrangement, it emulates or it's almost identical to what the drop program currently is. So any questions?
Do you need an ordinance for that direction or do you just need to have?
Well, what I was hoping is, is that we could get council consensus today on if you are good with those recommendations or if you want us to see us do something different. Basically give me direction on how you would like to handle that. And then rather than adopt an ordinance, then what I would do is armed with that information, go back and talk to those specific employees and explain to them that negative impact and, and, and what the, what the plan is, as well as the ones that were interested in doing the drop, I could explain to them how they can emulate the drop program and how we can, we can handle that. And then based on after that, then we would bring back an, an ordinance for council approval to do two things. One, enrolling all employees into loggers and then freeze the legacy plan. And then the third step would be then, when possible, but that's probably two years out, is, is we would transfer the legacy plan to the administration of loggers, which is what we did with the police department after the plan.
And I would motion to?
Can we get a consensus?
Consensus to move forward with your recommendation.
I'm in agreement.
I'm in agreement.
With one, two, and three?
With one, two, yeah.
Well, and with these two recommendations here, I'm sorry. Yeah. To bonus that out and then allow the in-service.
Yes.
We have consensus. Okay. You should handle that next council man.
Okay.
Thank you.
Our second, our second item under public safety is an agreement with Spartan Metro Star Custom Pumper and Equipment. As presented during the fire department strategic plan and vetted through the budgeting process, it is time to order a replacement fire pumper truck. Chief Urban has worked through a cooperative purchasing agreement with multiple vendors to, to source a truck that best suits our needs within the budget. Staff recommends approval of the purchase of a fire engine from Field Fire Equipment at a total cost of $746,170. And further to take the option of paying the truck at the time of order, which will discount the net price to $723,621. This is within the budget that was appropriated for $750,000.
When is the anticipated delivery?
Just right around the corner.
Any questions from council? Arlene, read the orders, please.
Bill number 2022-57, an ordinance authorizing an agreement binding between the City of Soudaya, Missouri Fire Department and Ed M. Feld Equipment, doing businesses Feld Fire for the purchase of a Spartan Metro Star Custom Pumper and Equipment.
Second reading, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Bill number 2022-57, an ordinance authorizing an agreement binding between the City of Soudaya, Missouri, Soudaya Fire Department and Ed M. Feld Equipment, doing businesses Feld Fire for the purchase of a Spartan Metro Star Custom Pumper and Equipment.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call, please.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
All in favor?
What color is that truck? Pink? Sheriff, Thomas Oldham.
All right, we have five items under public works tonight, but we're going to go by them pretty quick because the first four items, council has already appropriated the funds in our budget session. So the first item, we need to approve and accept a quote for two stand-up commercial mowers from Otten Small Engine.
Any questions, council? Read the orders, please.
Bill number 2022-58, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote from Otten Small Engine LLC for the purchase of two stand-up commercial mowers to be utilized by the public works department.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Bill number 2022-58, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote from Otten Small Engine LLC for the purchase of two stand-up commercial mowers to be utilized by the public works department.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call, please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
All in favor?
Second item, we need to approve and accept a quote for a rear load refuse truck from Elliott Equipment Company.
Any questions, council? Arlene, read the orders, please.
Bill number 2022-59, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote from Elliott Equipment Company for the purchase of a rear load refuge truck to be utilized by the sanitation department.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Bill number 2022-59, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote from Elliott Equipment Company for the purchase of a rear load refuge truck to be utilized by the sanitation department.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call, please.
Richardson?
Yes.
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
And Bogus?
Yes.
All in favor?
Third, we need to approve and accept a quote from Otten Small Engine Company, uh, Engine LLC for a gravely pro-turned commercial mower.
Any council questions? Read the orders, please.
Bill number 2022-60, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote from Otten Small Engine LLC for the purchase of a pro-turn mower to be utilized by the water department.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Bill number 2022-60, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote from Otten Small Engine LLC for the purchase of a pro-turn mower to be utilized by the water department.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yep.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
And Richardson?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Fourth, we need to authorize a sales purchase of a tow behind air compressor from Foley
Any questions, please? Read the orders.
Bill number 2022-61, an ordinance authorizing a sales agreement for the purchase of a tow behind air compressor.
Second reading.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Bill number 2022-61, an ordinance authorizing a sales agreement for the purchase of a tow behind air compressor.
Final pass.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Yes.
And Cross?
Yes.
All in favor?
Finally, we need to approve a contract extension for yard waste grinding for Hanson Tree Service. We do this every year and then we sell back the, the mulch and the compost for either low cost or free to the public.
Any council questions? Read the orders, please.
Bill number 2022-62, an ordinance authorizing a one-year contract extension for yard waste grinding.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Bill number 2022-62, an ordinance authorizing a one-year contract extension for yard waste grinding.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call, please.
Liz?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
And Foster?
Yes.
All in favor?
That's all I have, sir.
So Thomas, when you spend money?
Yes.
You spend a lot of money.
I've got a champagne taste, which I can accept.
Andrew Dawson, under your last chairmanship?
Yep, I have no, no report, Your Honor.
Oh, my goodness gracious.
I'm not being...
Liquor licenses, Arlene?
We have two renewal licenses this evening. Nicole Walker, doing businesses Broadway Liquor and Smokes at 2610 West Broadway for a packaged liquor, Sunday sales and taste testing license. for a packaged liquor, Sunday sales and taste testing license. And Brett Sorrell, doing business as VFW Post 2591 at 121 South Ohio, for liquor-by-the-drink license.
Motion to approve and block?
Second. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's go, let's roll.
Before we adjourn, Your Honor, I'd like to respectfully resign my office as second ward councilman.
I'm not accepting it. So, is his resignation, do we have to accept that from the council?
Does there have to be a second?
He good if he did. I'm sort of in a bind here, a few minutes. So, roll call, please. Okay, hold on just a moment.
While Ms. Sylvie works on that, actually, what we should probably have is a council member making a motion to accept and a second, then we'll vote.
A motion to accept Andrew Dawson's resignation as second ward councilperson.
Bob and I, second.
So, we're going to do a roll call?
Yes. Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yep.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
I don't know.
Foster?
Yes.
And Bliss?
Yes.
All in favor?
Now, we go in a kind of confusing in our lives with the term signed up. So, that being said, I'm going to kiss this baby goodbye. So, at this time, I think I have these special plaques to give out to my favorite council members.
Now, I don't know how Andrew was able to get it black because he just was on.
So, let's see. On behalf of everyone here, Mayor Katie, I would like to express our gratitude and thanks for your service as mayor of the City of Sedalia. The past few years have been, no doubt, challenging, from personal challenges to protests and civil unrest to pandemic. You've seen it all. But through all of that, you've guided our community from a place of strength and love. When other communities were closing their doors and shutting things down, you fought to keep Sedalia open by appealing to the better angels of our nature, and I thank you for that. There's an Athenian oath I'd like to read. "We will never bring disgrace to on this our city by an act of dishonesty or cowardice. We will fight for the ideals and sacred things of the city, both alone and with many. We will revere and obey the city's laws and will do our best to incite like reverence and respect in those above us who are prone to know them or set them not. We will strive unceasingly to quicken the public sense of civic duty, thus in these ways we will transmit this city not only not less, but greater than and more beautiful than it was transmitted to us." So, through all those challenges, you have led us to a better place. And having, leaving office, you're leaving us with a cleaner Sedalia. You don't see as many piles of trash sitting around, or many derelict buildings. They completed the rail spur and brought new corum. You've built a community center, a place where we can all gather together as members of this community. Under your leadership, our community has flourished at a time when others have faltered. You are the embodiment of that Athenian oath, leading our community greater and more beautiful, and we all thank you for that. On a personal note, I'm going to miss you. I'm going to miss the 6:00 AM phone calls, the driving the neighborhoods with you, the jumping in the car to go handle a random problem. I'm going to miss that dearly. And from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank you for the knowledge that you've passed to me, for the generosity that you've, you've been very generous with your time and spending that with me, and also, above all, thank you for your friendship.
Andrew, thank you, and this could not have been done without this council and staff, great staff. We achieved this, the cooperation. It's been wonderful. I appreciate everybody.
And I've got a plaque for you. It says, Mayor John Katie, for your four years of service, April 16th, 2018, through April 18th, 2022, we have been honored to have you as our esteemed mayor for four years. And we lost the audio.
That's their fault.
I think so.
Did you have a touch, David?
No, it's not me.
Can we call Dawson and tell him that we lost sound? Or text him?
I don't think Lucas says any either.
Was I?
Lucas doesn't have it either. Lucas is on here.
Good luck to you.
At this time, I'd like to call forward the newly elected councilmen that are here.
Mr. Cory would like to make a couple comments, is that okay?
Sure, sure.
Mayor Katie, on behalf of my family and a lot of your friends and probably most of Sedalia, I want to say thank you for what you've meant for this, been through this past four years. You've had many accomplishments. One of the better accomplishments that I like is your cleanup Sedalia program. I watched you on the street, in front of your house, behind your house, in the alley, and you were right there helping clean up. You have helped clean and destroy 25 or 30 vacant houses in the community, and you've done a tremendous job, and we really appreciate you, and we're going to miss you. And I hope that Mr. Dawson continues your cleanup program. It's very vital to Sedalia's growth in the future. John E. Yance sincerely.
Thank you very much.
I guarantee you, it's on this list, and you'll start tomorrow. Thank you, David. Appreciate it, David.
We will go ahead and have our swearing in, and our attorney, Joe Labber, says I can go ahead and swear in Jack Robinson, since he is on the TV here, so.
I have a Bible.
And Lucas. We can do that too, so we'll take care of everyone. Okay, if you will raise your right hand and repeat after me, I in your name solemnly swear or affirm I possess all the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of city councilman for the City of Sedalia, Missouri that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Missouri the provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of the third class and the ordinances of the city and faithfully demean myself in office. Thank you. And if I could have you sign those, please?
Thank you, ma'am. How are you?
Just good.
Congratulations, ma'am.
Congratulations. Here's your certificate of license. Okay, now it is my honor to call forward our newly elected mayor, Andrew Dawson. Okay. Right, you're good. Okay, if you will repeat after me, I in your name
I, Andrew Dawson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I possess all the qualifications prescribed by law
That I possess all the qualifications prescribed by law
for the office of mayor
For the office of mayor.
Of the City of Sedalia, Missouri
Of the City of Sedalia, Missouri.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
and of the State of Missouri
And of the State of Missouri.
and the provisions of all laws of this state
And the provisions of all laws of this state
affecting cities of the third class
affecting cities of the third class
and the ordinances of the city
and the ordinances of the city.
and faithfully demean myself in office
and faithfully demean myself in office.
Thank you. Thank you, and congratulations.
Hello, mayor.
Now, we can drop the elect.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll call this April 18th, 2022, meeting the Sedalia City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross? Foster?
Yes.
And Bliss?
Yes. Okay, first item of business is the appointment of the now vacant second ward councilman seat. So, I have a letter here to read. Honorable City Council, pursuant to RSMO 77450 vacancies how filled, I, the Honorable Mayor Andrew L. Dawson, appoint Chris Marshall to the Office of Second Ward Councilman to complete the term of office ending April 23, April 2023. Mr. Marshall meets the councilman qualifications as outlined in RSMO 7760, is of good character, has kept himself informed as to the business and operations of the City of Sedalia by regularly attending meetings and work sessions of the City Council, and has demonstrated a willingness to service community. Do I have a motion, a second, to accept the appointment?
My motion to accept the appointment.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Does that have to be roll call? No. Okay, so now, we need to go ahead and get him sworn in, the motion carrier.
Get in the photographic area. Okay, repeat after me, I in your name
I, Chris Marshall.
Do solemnly swear that I possess
Do solemnly swear.
all the qualifications All the qualifications prescribed by law
I possess all the qualifications prescribed by law
For the office of city councilman
For the office of city councilman
Of the city of Sedalia, Missouri
Of the city of Sedalia, Missouri
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the state of Missouri
And the state of Missouri
The provisions of all laws of this state
The provisions of all laws of this state
Affecting cities of the third class
Affecting cities of the third class
And the ordinances of the city
And the ordinance of the city
And faithfully demean myself in office.
Faithfully demean myself in office.
Congratulations. Okay, you may take your spot as a councilman.
Okay, moving along. We have the election of mayor pro tem now. Do I have any nominations? Or I'll open the floor for nominations for mayor pro tem?
I have one. I'd like to nominate Tina Bogus. She's demonstrated composure and leadership and a strong grace anchored in faith, and I'm sure that she would serve us well in the position of mayor pro tem.
Do you accept the nomination, Tina?
I do.
You're having heard the nomination for councilwoman Bogus, do we have any more nominations?
I would like to be nominated for mayor pro tem as well.
Okay.
May I have a second for this? Thank you.
Do we need a second for mayor pro tem nominations?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a second, Tom?
I have a second.
Okay. All right, so.
We lost audio.
Yes.
Yes. We're gonna have a vote. They can't hear Lucas's eyes. You can't, huh? You can't really tell what's going on. Damn it. Oh, you're right. Oh, no. This is just. Can't get back to.
Can't get back.
It's okay.
I'm gonna go up and grab that.
I'm trying to vote.
I recommend they get an IT person at meetings.
They don't do this very much.
If anything else, are they gonna ask you to speak? This light and that light.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Hey, Jack, if we type in the, uh, comment section, it'll count. They put in a message for us.
Okay, I don't know how to do that, Lucas.
There's a little talk bubble up in the top right corner.
Okay.
Yeah, if you click on that top bubble and then go to everyone. Calvin Shaw messaged us.
Hello? Okay, I'll, I'll vote for Tom. Okay, I, I can type this in, just a minute. On the chat. Okay. Okay, I vote for Tom. Okay.